Meeting of September 24th. Would you please call the roll?
Commissioner Cardoza.
Here.
Commissioner Donaldson.
Here.
Commissioner Jeffrey.
Here.
Commissioner Martin.
Here.
Vice Chair Flores.
Here.
Chair Hoff.
Here.
And Commissioner Sherman has an excused absence this evening, so we have a quorum of six commissioners.
Please join me in the pledge legions.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'm overwhelmed with this.
Let's pull it together. We've got one visitor.
I'm overwhelmed with this packed house.
Let's assume everybody's watching.
I assume there are no public comments. So we'll go on. Action recap, please.
I've actually got a couple. I've got a couple of comments on the minutes from August 27.
Okay.
I do too. You go first, Jim.
On page 6 of 13, under the last sentence, the discussion for FAR. My recollection was that the last item on the page is a motion for changing the FAR in the Eastern Residential Neighborhood to .06 to .09, including parking. My recollection, there was a earlier motion, I think Frank, you made a motion about a flat FAR .75?
Right.
Is that in there?
I don't think it was seconded.
There were a number of other motions that were not voted on. There was some deliberation.
Yeah, there was a motion and a second. Don't we usually at least include our motions in seconds? When there's a motion and a second, I thought it gets incorporated into the minutes. And then I think it's, I did a substitute motion.
I wanted it dropped to .5. I want that on the record, too.
Okay.
You had proposed .5.
Right, and that was backed by John, I remember that.
So the motion was by who? The first, the motion?
By, the first motion. The first motion was by me, and that was to reduce it to .5, and John Sherman seconded that.
Right.
And it didn't pass.
And there was a vote on that?
.5 and what?
.5 and point, .5 to .75.
Right.
But it included parking.
Right.
Okay.
And then, I think Frank, you either made a substitute motion, or?
I think you should check both of these, because I'm having a hard time recalling yours, Patty. No offense to it, but I couldn't remember if it was a, if, I could see you making the motion, but I don't remember the second. Mine was for .9. No, it was, wasn't it?
Flat .75.
Flat .75, no bonus.
No conditional use.
No conditional use, just .75.
And what was yours, Patty?
Mine was .5 and .75.
Okay, and then we agreed on .6 and .9.
Correct.
Did you make those corrections, please?
And Buzz seconded mine. That's all I remember on the vote, though. I know, I just know it didn't fly.
Yeah, we had a lengthy deliberation on this.
We certainly have notes about all of this. We just didn't choose to incorporate into the minutes, you know. We put the final decision on each item in the minutes, is what we did. But we can go back and add these.
We want all that deliberation in the minutes.
They're not long enough for you?
Two action minutes.
Yeah, the action minutes.
All right, all right.
Somebody else have a comment on the action?
Well, then, on the next page, 7 of 13, under the transit center, the motion for transit center is defined as having bus bays on the ground floor of the building, wide sidewalks, and improved pedestrian circulation and activation, plus some of the following. My, I recall shouting out "alternative transportation facilities," which wasn't, I mean, that's sort of the focus here, but I remember calling that out specifically, because I wanted that as a general criteria.
What does that mean?
Alternative, I don't know.
It seems like it's captured in all the things that are listed here.
Roller skates, whatever.
I guess, but I do recall shouting that out. So, I don't know what's going to happen in five years, or whatever.
Okay, well, we can add that to the list.
Thank you. Oh, segue, segue.
Segways.
Anybody else?
Yes. On page 7 of 13, no, I'm sorry, excuse me, on page 12 of 13, and this is the last paragraph, and this is concerning the Emory Station West study session. I wanted to add, and I don't know where, it seems to me that the best place to put this is, 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6. The 6th line, where it says, "At least two commissioners commented that the upper-level plaza would be used primarily by the users of the building unless the space was programmed to attract people." I want to add a new sentence after that, that says, "At least one commissioner commented that a street-level plaza should be provided on Horton Street."
Wait a minute.
That would be me.
I think it was two of us.
Well, I couldn't remember, it was getting late by then.
Probably was more than two of us.
I would like to add on.
Yeah, so several, or three, at least three commissioners?
If you could permit me to join you, where it says,
Yes.
"At least two commissioners commented that the upper-level space would be used primarily by users." That's really not strong enough language. I think the sense of several of us was, there was no way this project was viable with this plaza in the sky, and I think that should be reflected.
That it should not be considered public space.
Public space, or qualify for bonuses or anything like that.
And that several commissioners would like to see a ground-level plaza on Horton.
Yeah, I want to join in that, and Gail as well.
Sure.
And Jim as well.
I did.
So this is all what was said at that meeting?
Yes.
Okay.
Could you repeat that language, because I just want to make sure we're talking about the same thing? I mean, the plaza, what they're calling the plaza up there, was sort of pre- attaching the bridge.
Third floor.
Right, the third floor, it was before the bridge was attached, or part of the plan, the night we were talking about this.
Yeah, they had no bridge connection.
Right, and now there's a bridge connection coming, and.
But I think Patty's.
That appeared at a later.
So I just don't want to make a blanket statement, I don't want to back a blanket statement that says that would never be considered public space, when if that bridge connection is made, there is some public space there that becomes a link, and a lot of people, including my.
They have put the bridge in now, in the.
But I think.
I'm just saying.
This is, this is minutes for what we were shown at the time.
Well, I just didn't.
That's all it applies to.
Art made a, sort of a blanket statement, and we all agreed that that would never be considered public space.
Now, wait a minute.
Several, several of you.
The thing that they presented, the thing that they presented, the plan they presented at the last meeting, had the bridge connection.
No, it did not.
No, that was the study session we went to.
That was later, yeah, it was a community meeting.
Oh, was that the community meeting?
Right.
Okay, I understand.
Those were different plans.
But at that time.
Do you got that, Charlie?
I've got it.
After all of our rambling?
Okay, sorry.
Yes.
I mean, I agree, it's not public.
Okay, anything else?
I guess it's not appropriate to say so, but I will anyway. I don't think the bridge connection would change my view on a sky-level plaza, and I assume it wouldn't change other people's view as well.
Okay, but we're, you're just saying that now, not as part of the minutes of the last meeting.
I just want to add.
I'll make a motion to second the minutes with the revisions, unless there are additional revisions.
I'll second that.
Okay, without exception, the minutes are approved.
All right.
Director's report, please.
Okay, first to let you know what the city council has been doing since your last meeting. They met on September 1st, and again on September 15th. On September 1st, they passed on second reading the ordinance extending the term of the development agreement for Bay Street until October 20th of 2014. As you know, this was recommended by the commission at your July 23 meeting. In a related action at that meeting, the redevelopment agency extended the exclusive negotiating agreement and the disposition and development agreement with Madison Marquette. It was a standing-room-only crowd. A number of people spoke on the item, many of whom were affiliated with either the East Bay Alliance for a Sustainable Economy and/or Residents United for a Livable Emeryville. Also on September 1st, the council, the city council decided to cancel their November 3 meeting because of the election, so there will only be one council meeting in November, on the 17th. And they approved the local hazard mitigation plan. This is an effort that has been spearheaded by the Economic Development and Housing Department, the Building Division, and Fire Department, and others have been involved in that. This plan will make the city eligible for FEMA funding in the event of a natural disaster. The main event at the September 15th meeting, of course, was to be the general plan. That was scheduled, but due to the illness of the mayor, it's been postponed now until October 6. And the mayor has indicated if the council does not complete their deliberations on it by 11:30 PM, that it will be continued to a special meeting the following week, on October 13th. And I hope to see you all and most of the steering committee there at the October 6 meeting of the city council. That meeting set a record for brevity, hopefully to be outdone by you tonight, but it lasted half an hour, adjourning at quarter of eight. They did, however, do one other thing, one other planning-related thing, which was to approve the redesign of the sidewalk in front of the Paula Le Duke property as part of the Park Avenue Street Improvement Project, to provide access to the parking there while still allowing enough space for street trees and streetlights. Concerning the zoning update, the general plan and zoning update steering committee is continuing their work on the zoning ordinance. They're, they met just two days ago, on September 22nd, where, I believe, half of you were there, discussing parking regulations. The upcoming meetings will be on October 27th, when sign regulations will be discussed, and on December 8th, where the bonus point system and design guidelines will be revisited. And finally, in other news, just to remind you that the annual Emeryville Celebration of the Arts show will be running from next Saturday, October 3, through Sunday, October 25th. From 11:00 AM to 6:00 PM daily, it will be as, the same place it was last year, in the BRE Building at 5815 Schelmaun Way, across from the Woodfinn Hotel. The opening reception, which is the social event of the year in Emeryville, will be next Friday, October 2, from 6 to 9 PM, and I encourage you to come see the artwork of my very talented staff. Arlie has a photograph in the show this year. She's taking Deborah's place, who has been too busy working on the general plan to do any painting lately. So that's my report. I'll be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you so much. I, unfortunately, because of family commitment that I can't get out of, cannot be at the next council meeting. But I hope the rest of the commission, or most of you, will be there. Can I count on good representation, Mr. Martin? Anyway, I hope the rest of you can do it, and.
I'll be there.
Thanks, I appreciate it. Okay, so that gets us to the public hearings. The first public hearing is Pixar Animation Studio Development. Please.
That is me. This is actually Miru's item. Miru is on vacation, so I'm going to do this. This is a proposed amendment to Pixar's development agreement, requested by Pixar Animation Studios and the Redevelopment Agency. Just to quickly remind you about Pixar's project, it's a PUD, across the street from us. It's, the approved PUD has four phases, the existing building, which was Phase 1, the building that's currently under construction, which is Phase 2. Phase 3 would be another building along Park Avenue and an associated parking garage. And Phase 4 is a building at 45th and Hollis Streets. This is the site plan for the Phase 2 development, currently under construction. So at the end of the current development, this is what the site will look like. This is the Phase 2 building here that's currently being built. This is the expanded surface parking lot. It also includes this linear park and pedestrian bicycle path on the east side, as well as some landscaping improvements over on Hollis Street and a small plaza at Park and Hollis. And these are some elevations of what the building that's currently under construction across the street will look like when it's finished. As you know, Pixar PUD was originally approved in 1998. It included two buildings, the existing building and the one currently under construction. In 2004, that PUD was modified to include some additional buildings and additional site area. The approvals in 2004 included a development agreement between the city and Pixar. And last year, the development agreement was modified in conjunction with construction of the Phase 2 building. The Planning Commission approved that modification in May, and it went on to the city council and was ultimately approved in August. Those modifications included a number of provisions, which I won't enumerate here. They're all listed in your staff report, and we can go over them if you wish to. But two of the provisions of those, of the amended development agreement, was that Pixar would contribute $2 million to the city to be used for capital improvements in conjunction with the proposed Emeryville Arts and Cultural Center, which is to be in the building, the brick building behind us here. And secondly, that Pixar would host a fundraising event in support of the Arts and Cultural Center. Pixar has given the city the $2 million. They contributed that as part of their pulling the building permit for the building that's currently under construction. Pixar and the Redevelopment Agency have been discussing this and negotiating about it, and they now request that the development agreement be modified in two ways. First, to allow the agency to spend a portion of those $2 million towards non-capital expenses as a grant to the nonprofit entity that is being created by the city to run the Arts and Cultural Center, so that they, so the nonprofit can hire personnel and do programming and additional fundraising for capital improvements. Secondly, to eliminate Pixar's obligation to host a fundraising event. And the reason for this is concern, frankly, for donor fatigue, that Pixar, as you know, for many years, has hosted an annual fundraiser for the Emory Education Fund. And the concern is that the Emory Education Fund might suffer if it has to compete with another fundraiser for the Arts and Cultural Center. So because of that concern, Pixar and the agency are requesting that that obligation to hold a fundraiser be eliminated. So, our recommendation is that the commission recommended to the city council that these modifications to the development agreement be approved. That concludes my presentation. I'd be happy to respond to any questions you may have. And Anna Shimko, I see, is here, who, representing Pixar, and she can, I don't know if you want to address the commission, but she can.
Only if there are questions, I wish to repair the record of the meeting.
Oh, well, thank you.
Are any questions, staff?
Yeah, I, just one question, with the elimination of the fundraiser for the Arts and Cultural Center. Is the Arts Committee and, you know, Sharon Wilshere, is everyone okay with that? I mean, do they have a problem with that?
I'm not aware of that.
Was there any consideration of that?
Part of the, part of the change to the $2 million allocation is to allow the nonprofit, the new nonprofit, of which Sharon Wilshere is on the board, to use, use the money towards future fundraising events that they would sponsor. So I assume that they're okay with it.
But has she, has she been apprised of this, as a change? Does she, is she aware of it?
I don't know that for a fact. I imagine they are. I mean, there's five people that have been appointed to that board. I can remember them off the top of my head, John Gooding, former city manager John Flores.
Why, why would the Arts Commission object? They're the beneficiary of this, they're going to get to use the money early.
No, this is the nonprofit entity.
This is the fundraiser that is being removed.
This is the nonprofit entity that would be, that would be using the money.
They're giving up a fundraiser in lieu of getting money to set up a nonprofit foundation.
Correct.
Not, not really, it's not that. The money was already given. It was, the consideration is whether another fundraiser will impact the school's ability to raise money, and I have some discussion about that, but.
Okay.
Charlie, could you go back to the slide that shows the two? You explain what?
Oh.
No, the one that explained, that one.
Uh huh.
And these are essentially what the motion are, is. But the first bullet point, allow a portion of the $2 million, dot, dot, dot. How is that different than when the contribution was originally made?
It was, it was only to be used for capital improvements.
Okay.
And so now the request is, the city, we have the money, but under the terms of the development agreement, we're not allowed to use it for anything other than capital improvements. I don't imagine that it would make any difference to Pixar, since they've already given us the money. It's just to allow the agency to use it to give.
And I've been to a couple of Pixar events recently, and Sharon's been there, so I think there's a lot of discussion there already. This, to me, looks like using, that's freeing up the money to use it wisely now, as opposed to just to the hard costs.
Right.
And so that's, that's the trade-off. And then even though there isn't a, you know, a fundraising event, my, my guess is Pixar will contribute, you know, something to it, whether it's movies or something, but that, we're releasing them from that, so anyway. I just wanted to make sure that was.
My sense is that Pixar, well, I don't know, Ms. Shimko can perhaps respond to this, but my sense is that Pixar really would care about hosting another fundraiser, that they probably do it if we ask them to, but the concern is that the Emory Ed Fund might suffer.
Is the Pixar representative aware of the fact of whether Sharon is familiar with this change?
No, I actually don't know that individual. I do know that this matter has been under discussion for a number of months, and has been, I believe I've seen minutes of some commission, I don't know whether it was the Arts Commission, that had discussed this long, long ago, and the desire to be able to spend the $2 million on personnel instead of capital funds, and so, and Charlie, I don't know if you remember, I do recall seeing some minutes of a meeting, and I believe it might have been the Arts Commission, or maybe it was this independent board, where they were discussing this development agreement amendment, and it was a number of months ago. We've actually had this all ready to go and to come to you, but there was a noticing issue, and then you had the general plan in front of you, so it's been delayed for quite some time. But I think that this has been out in the arts community and with no objection.
Does this have to be approved by the city council?
Yes, it does.
Yes, by ordinance.
So, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Does Pixar, my understanding is that the removal, the elimination of the obligation to host the fundraising event is coming more from the city side. Does Pixar have a problem with doing perhaps some other kind of fundraising, or some fundraising event farther in the future? Because the timeline was pretty clear in this original development agreement.
It was to be this year.
It was to be this year, but if we talked about something further down the line after a development director has come on to the staff of the art center, does Pixar have an issue?
I, I really can't speak for Pixar on that issue. I know that at this point, they are interested in having this amendment go forward. In, you know, given Pixar's track record in the city, I would say that it's highly likely that Pixar would be very supportive of the art center, both as a corporation and a lot of its individual employees, because those are the kinds of people that work there. I would say with respect to the Emeryville Education Fund event, I know I go every year, I do a number of folks from the city. My understanding was that this year, they did not sell out until the very last day, until the day of the event, and normally that happens a lot earlier. So, it really would not have been a good idea to compete with that event this year and fulfill that term.
But if things change, they might change their mind.
They might, however, at this point, both Pixar and the agency would like to see the development agreement amended as proposed. I think Pixar has a very good history of being an excellent community partner, so I think you can be pretty well assured that they will be involved in the arts center going forward.
Can I suggest that if we approve this, Sharon Wilshere will be on notice, and she can always bring her complaints to the city council? If, that'll really put it.
Well, as I indicated, I don't know about the second part, but Sharon Wilshere is one of the members of the Board of Directors of this new nonprofit that is going to benefit from this change.
My guess is Sharon's.
That's my thought.
I'm going to move the approval of the attached planning commission resolution recommending to the city council and approve the Second Amendment to the Amendment and Restated Development Agreement. Can that be one?
We haven't opened the public hearing or had any discussion.
I'm sorry.
That's, well, you can still put a motion on the table.
That's my motion. Can that be one motion, Charlie? There's two, okay.
I'll second that.
So we're finished, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
No, before I open the public hearing, did you have some other comment?
Well, there was a motion and a second, and if we're going to vote on that, I would.
No, you can't vote on that before the public hearing.
We're putting that in suspense.
Okay.
So, I will open the public hearing. Is there anybody that cares to speak on this matter? Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing. Now we can deal with this motion. It was moved by Mr. Flores, and second, any discussion on the motion?
Well, I'd like to make a substitute motion.
Okay.
And that would be that the first part about the contribution going to non-capital expenses, I would, that would stay the same. But I would like to say that Pixar, put in some kind of language, that Pixar shall coordinate with the new administration of the art center to host a fundraiser of some sort within the next five years, or some, you know, some language like that. Or that Pixar shall hold a fundraising event at the property in coordination with the Cultural Arts Center Development Director. Said event shall not compete with any fundraiser for the Emory Ed Fund, because I think there's other kinds of things other than a first-release movie that Pixar could do that would generate a lot of money for the art center and that would not put Pixar out.
You know, I agree with that point. I understand the concern about the Emory Ed Fund, but this was included in the development agreement from the start for a reason. Because of, in part, because of the idea that it was important to make sure that Pixar was meshed with the community. And they did step up to the plate after the Phase 2 was approved, but, you know, I would second Gail's motion. I think it's important that there be some language acknowledging a continuation of that part of the development agreement, even if it's in general form.
So, would your motion be that they make their best efforts within five years? They're not an obligation?
Well, I think if we term it as an obligation, which they already have, that if there is some issue, it can come back.
Okay.
I don't, is your motion date specific? I'd just like to see Pixar continue to coordinate with the art center in some capacity.
I would be all right with that. I'd be all right with that.
My only, I mean, I'd love to hear from the applicant on that, but that's almost making this assumption that they aren't. And I think that that is just so not true, and we all know that at this, at this diocese, it's not true.
Let's get this organized. We have a motion and a second. Would you repeat your substitute motion again, please?
Well, they're changing this.
To change B, to say Pixar shall hold a fundraising event at the proper.
Let's make the comments.
Would you pay attention, please? Second, second, go ahead.
The second part would be Pixar should be obligated to hold a fundraising event at the property in coordination with the Cultural Arts Center Development Director.
But did you have a time period in it before?
I did, but I took it out.
Okay. Do you want a second?
Okay, now, I thought you also had some provision in there that it doesn't conflict with.
Right, said event shall not compete with the fundraiser for the Emory Ed Fund.
Yeah, that was my second.
I'd just like to hear from the applicant on that motion.
Could I, could I just add one thing? I just want a point of clarification. Commissioner Martin, I believe, stated that this was in the development agreement from the beginning. That's, that's not accurate. This bit about the fundraiser event, that was added as part of the amendments to the development agreement last year. So, I think probably what happened was that the Emory Ed Fund didn't really think about it when it happened last year, and in the past year, they've been thinking about it. Thinking maybe it's not such a great idea. So that, I think that's probably the impetus for the change.
Yes, I'd be happy to speak to this. On behalf of Pixar, I cannot support that motion. I'd have to say, we're looking at terms that are a quid pro quo. Pixar would not have to host a fundraiser, and the agency can go ahead and use the $2 million in the way that it now desires to do. In terms of the fundraiser, the, the language that you've come up with specifies that it not conflict with the Emeryville Education Fund, and I just don't see how that is necessarily possible, because what Pixar does every year with the Emeryville Education Fund is tied to the release of a film, which is an excellent time to have a fundraiser. So I don't know how it could, Pixar would be caught in a very difficult position of trying to figure out how and when to have a fundraiser and what to arrange it around that doesn't conflict with the Emeryville Education Fund. At the same time, as stated before and echoed by several of you, I think Pixar has shown its commitment At the same time, as stated before and echoed by several of you, I think Pixar has shown its commitment to the community, to the arts, to the schools, to involvement in Emeryville, and that is going to happen no matter whether it is a term in a development agreement and a requirement or not. So, I'm absolutely certain that Pixar and its folks will be involved in the Arts Center. However, if you do recommend and the city council approves a development agreement that Pixar does not think that it, amendment, that Pixar does not think that it can readily abide by, we simply don't have to sign it. This is a contract. And so on behalf of Pixar, I'd have to say no to that amendment.
A question. Is Pixar committed to funding the school benefit, or is that something they volunteered to do?
I, I don't actually know the arrangements there. I think it's pretty voluntary. It's just, I don't, it's not a requirement anywhere. It's just something that has happened over time.
If they're forced to do the fundraiser for the Arts Center, they could excuse themselves from doing the fundraiser for the school?
I'm not in a position to say, because I actually don't know whether they have any formal arrangement there.
Well, I don't want to have any impact on the Emory Ed Fund fundraiser either, but it seems that if the Arts Center is hiring an executive director, development director, that there may be some really good creative ways, you know, a tour of the front-of-the-house facility or something that could, that would target a different audience than the people that come to the annual Emory Ed event. And they could really, really benefit the Arts Center.
Part of this proposed amendment is to free up some of this $2 million for the nonprofit to use for fundraising activities. So, it could be for something like that. I mean, they could contact Pixar and see if they could arrange something like that.
Well, that money amount hasn't changed. It's just how it's being used that's the change here.
That's right.
So, my question is, this, this part of the development agreement where Pixar was going to host a fundraising event, where did that come from? And Pixar must have agreed to it at one point. So, was that the city's idea or someone from the Cultural Center?
It was definitely not somebody from the Cultural Center.
Because that was just in formula, I mean, it was just being formed at that point.
It came up as a result of just the meetings that we had with the city in discussing the amendments to the development agreement that were done last year. It was not a major point. It was just an offer made by Pixar, and the city said, okay, that sounds good. But that, it was not one of the key deal points by any means.
According to, according to this, Pixar is obligated to have a fundraiser for the Emory Education Fund.
Right.
That's an obligation.
It is in the development agreement at this point, yes.
No, no, not for the Emory Education Fund.
No, not for the Emeryville Education Fund, right.
For the Cultural Center.
For the Arts and Cultural Center.
And, and again, I just have to reiterate, the trade-off of allowing the Porsche, the $2 million to be used to set up the nonprofit entity, which then can immediately start doing fundraising, not be handcuffed to just using the $2 million for a cap, for the, for the hard costs of the project, and start doing grant writing and having smaller events, and then maybe, again, I can just see Pixar and expressions, hold on, Art, please.
Sorry.
Would, 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 I would put money on, would get involved with it, and so hearing you say that you wouldn't agree with the amendment, I just have to reiterate my first motion.
Thank you.
So, for point of clarification, this amendment is something that the city initiated to free up the $2 million so that it could be actually used to pull in staff.
That's correct.
And Pixar, Pixar has agreed to it with the understanding that the obligation to host the fundraiser is removed.
That's correct.
Okay.
The obligation what?
The obligation to host the fundraiser for the center is removed as part of...
And the obligation for the Emory Education Fund is not part of this agreement?
No, there is no obligation.
There is no obligation.
No.
They just voluntarily have a fundraiser for...
It's a neighborly thing they do every year.
Every year.
Well, it's unclear whether it's an obligation, but I don't remember any type of obligation.
There's certainly no city agreement that requires them to do so.
It's not, it's not part of their planning entitlements for their PUD. I know that. I don't know if there's some, but I'm pretty sure it's on there.
And so I doubt that there's any kind of written agreement. Sorry.
I, one thing I'd just like to say is that if, if the council ultimately approves a change to the development agreement that Pixar doesn't agree with, which I don't think is too likely, but if that were to occur, and as Ms. Shimko says, then they don't sign it, well, then that would simply mean the existing development agreement is in place, which means the $2 million has to be used for capital expenses.
Yeah. Well, in terms of discussion, I understand the predicament. I seconded Gail's point, but I think, and because it's a substitute motion, I think we have to act on it before we take the first motion.
Are you, you're not withdrawing?
I'm not withdrawing it, but I don't think I can support it at this point, but I think we should have a vote on it.
Okay. If, if you don't, I mean, you can, you could withdraw it if you wanted to, but if you want...
At this point, I'm trusting Pixar.
Is he allowed to withdraw his second?
Has he withdrawn?
Is he allowed to withdraw the second?
I would...
I am, but I'm not, so let's just have a vote.
Yeah, okay.
You gotta have a vote on it.
All right. So, this is on the substitute motion. Are you ready?
We'll have a vote on the substitute.
Unless Gail's withdrawing her motion.
Uh, no, I would, I would keep the motion alive to say that Pixar should hold a fundraising event at the property in coordination with the Cultural Arts Center Development Director, and said event should not compete with the fundraiser for the Emory Ed Fund.
And you're seconding that?
I'm holding my second.
I'd just like to ask one point of clarification. What do you mean by the property? What property?
That's what it said. That was the earlier language on Pixar property.
Okay, well, then I guess we know what it means.
Basically saying it's making its door open to host a fundraiser of some sort.
On its property. Okay. Are you ready?
Please call the roll.
Commissioner Cardoza.
No.
Commissioner Donaldson.
Aye.
Commissioner Jeffrey?
Um, no, with the caveat that I presume that if there is a concern, that we will hear from Sharon Wilshire at the city council meeting.
Commissioner Martin?
No, with the understanding that staff's gonna contact Sharon Wilshire and make sure she understands this issue.
Vice Chair Flores?
No, with the understanding that Sharon has heard all about this.
And Chair Hoff.
Where's Sharon?
I, I vote aye. So, so that motion fails?
Two ayes, four noes. The motion fails.
Please call the roll on the original motion.
Okay.
Who seconded it, by the way?
Commissioner Cardoza seconded. Commissioner Flores made the motion. Commissioner Cardoza seconded. Commissioner Cardoza.
Aye.
Commissioner Donaldson?
Well, I'll vote aye, given that the Emory Ed benefit fundraiser is not an obligation, and I don't want to do anything that would jeopardize that.
Commissioner Jeffrey?
Yes.
Commissioner Martin?
Aye.
Vice Chair Flores?
Yes.
Chair Hoff?
Aye.
Six ayes. The motion is approved. We will forward your recommendation to the city council to approve the amendments to the development agreement.
Okay, thank you very much. Sorry for the confusion, but we got there eventually. The next item on the agenda is a public hearing on a request from AMC IMAX Signs. Please.
Good evening, commissioners, vice chair, chair. This presentation, as you said, is on two signs for the AMC Theater. They would be located on the roof tower at the theater. This is the farthest southwest corner of the property and the theater building, excuse me, the garage building. You can see Shell Mound is curving around there, and Bay Street is the L in the center of the picture. These are the south elevations and the west elevation. Let me clarify that the AMC lettering is there already. It is only the IMAX lettering that is proposed. As you can see here, this is a rendering of what it would look like. Here's the sign detail. It would be 42 inches high and 17 feet 10 and 1/2 inches long. This sign is coming to you because it's not part of the master sign program. It is a roof sign, however, and therefore qualifies as a major sign permit. The proposed sign, as I said, faces both, the signs face south and west, which at that point face to the freeway along the shoreline and south to IKEA and the freeway there as well. It is staff's recommendation that you approve the major sign permit subject to the conditions of approval in the staff report. This concludes my presentation, and we have someone from Pro Ed Signs here for your questions, if you have any.
Do you have any questions of the staff?
I have a question.
Go ahead.
Why is this not an amendment to the master sign program?
It was not proposed as such.
Well, I'm just wondering in terms of process...
Well, you could do it either way, but it's just, it's, you know, it's a one-of-a-kind standalone sign, so it seemed more straightforward to just approve it as a separate sign.
Okay.
Any other questions? Hearing none, that, that, thank you so much. Does the applicant wish to make a statement? I'm sorry, did you have a question?
Well, it's probably for the applicant.
Did you want to make a statement?
I have a question for you, so you might as well come up.
Well, my state, my, my statement is just that I think that it's, it's important for them to have this sign.
Could you identify yourself, please?
I'm sorry. My name is Cynthia Zemwalt, and I'm with Pro Ed Signs.
You're with who?
Pro Ed Signs. We're the fabricator manufacturer of the sign.
Have you been the fabricator and manufacturer for all the signs for this building?
No.
No, just for the illuminated signs on the top, or just this one?
For this particular project, yes.
Okay. I don't have any questions for you.
Any other questions?
Anybody have another question? Thank you so much. Any comments by the commissioners?
Public hearing.
Oh, there's nobody. Okay.
Oh, we gotta hold that public hearing, Art.
See somebody back there. Opening the public hearing, close the public hearing. Thank you, Jim. Now, are there any questions or comments by the commissioners?
Well, I, as, I'd just like to make a motion that we approve the sign. Unlike the situation that we saw recently at the Powell Street Plaza, that site did not have a master sign program, and I don't feel that it was integral to the rest of the development. This has a master sign program. I think procedurally, probably would have been better to amend that rather than do a major review. Just if nothing else, to acknowledge that they have a master sign program, but I don't think it's offensive. I think it draws attention to the center. I don't like the billboards underneath it, but that was a council decision, not a commission decision, so I don't have a problem with it, and I make a motion to approve it.
I'll second the motion and say that I'm excited that IMAX is in that theater.
That what?
That there's an IMAX now in that theater. I assume if they're putting IMAX.
Is there any way we can, for granting this sign, get rid of the two big signs underneath, or is that not on the cards?
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Oh, I think, oh, I thought Commissioner Flores seconded.
Frank seconded, yeah.
Commissioner Martin made the motion. Commissioner Flores seconded.
I'd like to comment, I...
I asked Charlie a question that...
Go ahead, I'm sorry.
That wasn't an answer yet.
I didn't hear it, I'm sorry.
Oh, is there any way we can get rid of the two big signs underneath this one in exchange for granting this one?
I think the short answer is no.
And the...
Is there a way that we can request to amend the master sign program for that place, because it's really, really unattractive and confusing?
Uh, well...
I'd like to point out, as part of the history with the Planning Commission, this, the master sign program came to the commission, and there was discussion about putting those advertisements on that corner there, which was the only artistic illuminated feature in the whole development. It had lights that changed at night and illuminated with different colors, the metal screen work underneath that sign. And they had tried to get this billboard treatment there. The Planning Commission, my recollection, voted to not allow that billboard treatment at that location, and I believe it went to the council, and the council allowed that at that location. So, it superseded the Planning Commission recommendation.
That's why my short answer was no.
That's, no, just that that's too bad.
All right, well, well, my comment is that, Jim, just because there's a sign, a master sign agreement, doesn't mean it's a very good agreement, because this is the most oversigned property I have ever seen. I have a shopping center in Incline Village, Nevada, and they would be abhorred at the number of signs that are permitted on this property. So, I think the way to get the two, in answer to Mr. Cardoza's question, the way to get the two signs removed below is to turn down this sign, which is what I plan to do. I don't think we should approve any more signs on this project. There's far too many signs there now. It's just a proliferation of signs. What did we count, 20 signs along Shell Mound alone?
On, for Bay Street?
Yeah.
Oh, I don't know.
When, when the Bevmore thing came up, I went out and counted the number of signs along Shell Mound Street.
That they installed on the back of the Bay Street?
Those, yeah, flags.
I had no idea. That's a lot. Yeah, but I...
There's, there's a sign for every single, there's a banner sign for every single use. Every, every window has a pictorial sign in it.
At Bay Street.
On the Shell Mound side of Bay Street. So, between the banners and the signs, there's 20 individual signs on Shell Mound. There's gotta be a limit to the number of signs that we...
That was part of the master sign program we approved.
Well, I, so I, but I...
But we didn't approve it. You said that the city council did. Well, not this aspect. The rest of it, we did approve.
Art, are you making a substitute motion?
No, I'm not.
You're just gonna vote no. Okay, well, I'll just, my motion was made, and, no, I'm sorry, Jim made the motion. I seconded the motion.
I'm just commenting on your motion.
But you're not gonna make a substitute motion?
No.
Oh.
I don't want to waste our time.
Let's vote.
I mean, I can count. I can count votes. Is there, is there a second to the motion?
There was.
Who's already seconded?
Who seconded it?
Commissioner Flores.
Please call the roll.
Commissioner Cardoza?
Aye.
Commissioner Donaldson?
No.
Commissioner Jeffrey?
Aye, but I respect our, our Commissioner Hoff's concern.
Commissioner Martin?
Aye.
Commissioner, Vice Chair Flores?
Aye.
And Chair Hoff?
No.
Four ayes, two noes. The application is approved. This decision may be appealed to the city council within 15 days.
Are there any comments of commissioner comments?
I have one. I got a notice that there's a cancellation of the Emeryville Housing Committee on Wednesday, October 7th. So, anybody out there listening, we're not having a meeting on October 7th.
I'd, I'd, I'd like to point out to those people who were concerned about our lengthy meeting last time, that with our meeting now being one hour, the average length of our meetings is only four hours.
For the last two. He went through the...
Let's see, seven and one, seven and one makes eight, divided by two, that's four hours. That's pretty good.
It was less than an hour. It was 50 minutes.
All right.
It's not adjourned yet.
None of, none of us really want to stay till 2:00 in the morning.
Was there some, was there something else, Mr. Charlie?
No, I just said you're not adjourned yet.
Oh.
So, we can't, we can't do the average yet.
Any other commissioner comments? Meeting adjourned. Thank you.